Good evening. It's October 18th, 2018. This is a meeting of the Northampton City Council. My name is Ryan O'Donnell and I'm the council president, so I'll be presiding tonight. These proceedings are being audio and video recorded, and we'll begin as we always do with public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any issue you wish. We ask you only to keep it to three minutes or fewer. And please remember that it's your time to give your opinion to us. We don't engage in a back-and-forth with you. And the reason for those things is just to make sure everyone is heard fairly and gets equal time. So I will start with the sign-up sheet. After I've exhausted it, I'll throw it open to anyone else who may wish to speak. The first person is Sarah McEwen, please. And if you would give your name and address for the record, and the floor is yours.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sarah McEwen from Cooley Dickinson Hospital, 30 Locust Street. And I am the nursing director of the emergency department at Cooley Dickinson. And I've been a nurse for 33 years, and it has always been a great privilege for me to provide care to those that are sick, injured, or vulnerable. In my role as the nursing director, I see firsthand how nurses, doctors, and other clinicians work together to provide extraordinary care to our patients. Expertise and critical thinking cannot be reduced to a numbers game. Patients are not numbers, and neither are nurses. I am gravely concerned about the inevitable consequences if question one is to pass. I am concerned about access to care. If the hospital is required to maintain rigid nurse-patient ratios, nurses will be pulled from community-based programs, specifically mental health outpatient services, limiting access to this vulnerable population. I am concerned about access of care. If an ambulance responds to a 911 call and brings a patient to the emergency department where the nurses are at their maximum ratio, the paramedic will not be able to hand the care of the patient over to a nurse until the nurse has room in their fixed ratio to accept the patient. Ambulances will either be waiting in the hospital driveways or forced to hospital shops for an emergency department that has a ratio allowing for them to accept a patient. This will take the ambulance out of service for longer periods of time, unable to respond to other emergencies that might come in during that time. Imagine if a critical patient is brought to the emergency department by a family member, and the nurses were all at their maximum ratio. Nurses will be forced to either care for that patient and incur a $25,000 fine, or have the patient wait. Question one not only -- question one only allows exemptions in the case of a state-declared public health emergency, not for the everyday-to-day flow of an ever-changing emergency department. If this ballot question goes through, Massachusetts will be required to hire 5,000 more nurses by January 1st. There's currently a shortage of 1,200 nurses in the state of Massachusetts. This is an unattainable task. Because the ratios in the ballot question one are so rigid, ultimately hospitals will be forced to close beds. What could this mean to Cooley Dickinson and the community that we serve? A 10 percent decrease in medical surgical beds, a 20 percent decrease in the emergency departments that will be seen, which would be about 7,000 fewer patients served annually, a 25 percent reduction in the number of women who could be birthed at Cooley Dickinson Hospital, and a 25 percent decrease in mental health inpatient beds. Ultimately, 10,000 people in our community will be affected if by this limited access to care. California has not produced any data supporting an improvement in the quality of care since adopting the nurse-patient ratios. Actually, Massachusetts currently outperforms California. Why would anyone model an initiative at this state whose healthcare system is inferior?
Ms. McEwen, could you maybe -- one more sentence to wrap up?
One more sentence.
Sure.
Cooley Dickinson's mission is to serve our patients and our communities with exceptional compassionate and personalized care. Please vote no on question one and allow us to preserve our mission and provide care to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person is Martha Nathan.
Boy, this is difficult. I'm expected to speak about one thing, but I think I'm going to have to start off with another. I'm 24 Massasoit Street in Northampton. And I would just like to say that the amount of confusion sown by corporate medicine around the issue of number one is pretty appalling. And my best analogy is one that, as I was canvassing on this issue, was given to me by a teacher who said this initiative, ballot initiative number one, is like making sure that, as a teacher, I do not have to teach 40 kids a day. There have to be limits to what professionals can do, the kind of services they can give. And I hope that people reconsider -- people consider the true facts on this issue. But that's not why I'm here. I'm here to thank you guys. I hate using "guys." That just pops out of you. Men and women are city councillors who are really stellar and did a wonderful piece of work two weeks ago in the first reading of the resolution to stop unneeded gas infrastructure, and specifically the Columbia pipeline expansion. Right after you passed that unanimously, the IPCC, as you know, came out with its report saying that we have 12 years to cut emissions by 45 percent. We cannot build more pipelines, and you have said as much, and we will continue to travel down that road, I know, towards cutting emissions so that we can save a world that is far too beautiful and far too precious for us. The Merrimack Valley explosions told us the story of the immediate dangers of gas, and the chronic emissions that cause asthma and COPD are the constant reminders of the health impacts of burning of fossil fuels. I thank you very much. I hope you pass it again on second reading tonight unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. The next person is Joe Tuarag.
Can I have 36 seconds?
All right, sorry, Joe.
So I'm Joe Tuarag, 21 Longfellow Drive. I'm here to talk about question one. From a personal point of view, my mother, about a few years ago, was in the ER here at Cooley Dickinson. I see these ads about holding the wall. It's all garbage, because what happened to her is disgraceful and cruel. She was put in a holding area in the hallway. They have institutionalized this, saying, "holding area three." I stood there with her for hours and hours and hours before she could be admitted upstairs because there was no staff. There was no staff. Finally, they shipped her into a holding area, another holding area, like a closet, and they call it "vast trap." There was no bathroom, no food, no place to sit. It was outrageous. It was for -- I'm sorry I'm so agitated, but it's outrageous. That's the reality. So when I see ads that the opposition is putting out, they're holding line, it's happening now. So the question I have is, how can more staff be bad for patient care? Keep that thought in mind. How can that be bad? So the other thing is that they say, the letter in today's paper, well, they have to choose between that or a $25,000 fine. That's garbage. The fine is $0 to $25,000, and it's reviewable, it's appealable, and it's not immediate. Period. The Health Policy Commission came out with an estimate last week. It's going to cost millions and millions of dollars. This was primarily through hospital researchers that put that together. They costed a nurse at $300,000. Hello, nobody -- show me that nurse. And they're also saying that the average wage increase would be 4 to 6 percent. I negotiated contracts for 40 years. That hasn't happened in probably two decades. It's garbage. Those are lies. The opposition is spending 27 million-plus of fighting this. We don't have that money to challenge that, but we do have feet on the ground, and we have truth on our side. Because there's lies, there's deception, there's intentional misrepresentation of the fact. And what's worse is they're scare tactics. They're scaring seniors. People who claim to be progressive and are speaking for Cooley Dickinson are saying it's going to take nurses out of these settings. That's garbage. It's very upsetting. And they're sending, by the way, money to the Cayman Islands. These hospitals are sending money to the Cayman -- that's our money. That's our money. That's taxpayer money. What's it doing there? And finally, the date of implementation. That is simply inaccurate. Look at the pot law. How many years does it take to implement that? That's simply saying that that's when it takes effect, and there'll be two years before they have reviews on the acuity standards and whatnot. The bill passed on one-to-one in the ICUs. There was -- and the hospitals challenged whatever emergency was. It went on for a year and a half before that was implemented. So it's patently unfair.
So, Mr. Tuarag, your time has expired.
Okay. It's shameful and disgraceful what they're doing.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. The next is Alex Jarrett.
Alex Jarrett, 85th Street, Florence. First want to speak just in support of the resolution on the moratorium on additional gas pipelines. I thought of the council on taking this statement here. I wanted to talk about Northampton Housing Authority and Councillor O'Donnell's proposal to add seats, tenant seats, to the board. And I'm definitely in favor of this proposal. I come from a worker cooperative and housing cooperative background. And so those organizations are democratically-run organizations that -- where the stakeholders are given a place at the table. And what I think is what, you know, Councillor O'Donnell is trying to do is to make the -- have, you know, the people who live there, the people who have a stake in the -- in a large stake in living there, to give them a place at the table and to make it a more democratically-run organization. I know from being part of a worker cooperative that it's critical to have that sense of ownership and that having seats on the board, you know, can give -- gives the tenants that sense of ownership rather than just a sense of helplessness. There are a couple -- in my history, there's a couple of ways to build that culture of cooperation. And one is to bring in a -- to bring in a few people at a time to already functioning, send paying a board that functions cooperatively. And the other is to have a strong program of education. So I think being raised in this culture, competitiveness and having the personal success be rated higher than group success is kind of a ideal that a lot of us have internalized. And that instead of -- and so instead, we want to create a culture of cooperation where that people can feel that this -- where group success is more important. And education around how to function cooperatively is important. So I urge that you build into that structure that as new tenant board members come on, that there's, you know, a lot of education around all of the issues for the one success. Thanks.
Thank you, Alex. I appreciate it. The next is Pam Hannah.
Hi, my name is Pam Hannah. I prefer "they" and "them" pronouns. I live at 11 Church Street in Northampton. And I'm just going to do a little touch on a bunch of things. So I understand there's a resolution coming tonight for you all to support "yes on three." And I hope that all of you take that on and support "yes on three." I didn't come with "no," I should have. So I'll just talk a little bit about "yes on three." So one of the things is what I see a real -- the real purpose of the "no on three," folks. And again, that is to -- the "yes on three" is to maintain the law that protects transgendered peoples in public spaces. The "no on three" people, their goal is to keep trans folks out of public spaces. They're framing it. They're using fear tactics, which get used all over the place. Right? The hospital administrators are using fear tactics about hospitals needing to close. When really, if we, you know, redistributed the CEO pay or if we took the 27 million that they're using for the "no on one" campaign and actually put that into the public sphere and put that into healthcare and single payer, et cetera, we wouldn't -- you all have such blunt faces. I get it. I was the school committee member. Anyway. So the fear tactic for -- the fear tactic for question three is saying that if this law stays in effect, that we are putting women and girls in danger in bathrooms, in public bathrooms. Which, first of all, there's been no increase in crime. And second of all, there is no "trans get out of jail card," "get out of jail free" card just by saying, "I am a trans person. I didn't mean -- or I did mean to assault you. But I'm a trans person, and I shouldn't be held accountable for that." That's not true. We know that in Northampton, there was a non-trans janitor who was taking pictures in the high school locker room, in the girls' locker room. And so this -- it's a fear tactic. And the people really who are vulnerable are trying to be kept out of public spaces. I do want to comment on the fear tactic that's being used because I do wish there was a greater focus on protecting women and girls and men and boys and people outside the gender binary from sexual assault. And one of the first places that I'd like to see that addressed, publicly addressed, publicly acknowledged, is the sexual assault that happened in our own state house. That happened with the collusion of our former state senator. I'd like that to be named. I'd like those survivors to be believed. I'd like for us to hold our friends as accountable as we hold some stranger accountable, the way that we all came out about Brett Kavanaugh. If we can't hold our friends accountable and encourage them to speak out and believe survivors, we're really screwed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Now we go to Patty Healy.
My name is Patty Healy, 21 Longfellow Drive. I'm a registered nurse. I worked for 41 years at Brigham and Women's. I trained at Cooley Dickinson, actually. I was a student at UMass. I'm here to speak in support of question one because I think it's really important for all of my city councillors to hear from us. Really, you're hearing from everybody outside of this room. But the first thing I wanted to do is -- because every place I've been where a nursing executive has reported that, there are no studies in California that support or have shown that there have been better outcomes in California. In fact, there were eight studies. I have the abstracts in my hand, and I would like to share them with you. You don't have to take them, but I bet that you look at them, because there are studies. And I have read all 80 studies that have indicated that there are better outcomes when you're better staffing in hospitals, bedside care. But as a nurse, you know, I've been dealing with this for 40 years. And my family has also been a -- they've been patients at both Bay State and Cooley Dickinson. They've been in the emergency room, they've been in the ICU. And I can say, because from an educated point of view as a nurse, I had to stay overnight with my parents and with my daughter because there weren't enough nurses at Cooley Dickinson or Bay State to care for them safely. And they admitted that to me, that they did not have the time to care for my loved ones. Nurse to nurse, I did hear that. Executives, the hospital industry has failed to address this. This has been an issue for my entire professional life. We have been -- had our unions work on it. We've had multiple strikes in this state. Have every single strike, and this state has addressed staffing. It wasn't about money. So I just want to remind you, we have not been able to change the staffing in Massachusetts hospitals using our best, strongest effort. And I wanted to address the emergency room wait times. Massachusetts has the 48th worst longest wait times of the 50 states. And that is a fact. We do not -- so we have a long way to go to make it better. In California, in the emergency room, three years after implementing the ratios there, their emergency room wait times reduced by 47 percent of time per patient. So those outcomes did change, and they're in many, many studies. Last of all, I just wanted to address the fact that this is only a union issue. In fact, 70 percent of Massachusetts hospitals have M&amp;A nurses there. So most bedside nurses in the state, yes, are part of M&amp;A and have funded this out of pocket. My union dues have paid for this. It's not the hospital industry spending thousands and millions of dollars, tax dollars, Medicaid dollars, Medicaid dollars, spending our money from our hospitals on fighting the very people who work in the hospitals and deliver that care. Women have been doing this work for eons. And this is also a fight for women workers because this industry wouldn't be able to get away with this for so long if this was a group of workers who were men. And I really believe that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hannah.
Go "yes on one."
Before we continue, I'd like to request that comments from the audience be addressed to myself and the council rather than other members of the audience. That just keeps things flowing better. The next person, his first name is Erin. You have to forgive me, I can't read the last name. But you can tell us and your name and address.
I'm Erin Bazoulis. I live at 131 State Street. I'm also a professor at Western Newman Law School in Springfield. I teach and research about civil rights, and particularly sex and gender discrimination. So I'm here in that capacity to speak in favor of your resolution reaffirming our public accommodations law prohibiting discrimination on the basis of gender identity. And I won't reiterate my neighbor's fine comments. I just want to add a little bit of historical context to that. Our public accommodations law in Massachusetts predates its federal counterpart by a century. It was in the wake of the Civil War that we passed a statute that recognized that discrimination on the basis of race was a barrier to the full inclusion in public life. And so we passed a statute to address that. Eventually, the United States, the federal government followed suit, not until the 1960s. But in the meanwhile, Massachusetts was busy expanding and adding protective categories to our earlier law. We added protection for discrimination based on religion and national origin by the 1950s. In the 1970s, we added protection on the basis of sex and disability. In 1989, we added protection on the basis of sexual orientation. And in 2016, we added protection against discrimination on the basis of gender identity. Every time our legislature did that, they did it in response to evidence that that protection was needed. Now we're faced with a ballot question that threatens to repeal the earlier added protections on the basis of gender identity. The very fact that we have that ballot question is proof that that protection is needed in our state law. Moreover, I want to talk about the fact that the injury that discrimination causes is not just the physical act of exclusion. It is a dignitary injury that occurs at the same time. And for that reason, I think it's critically important that municipalities like ours pass resolutions like the one that you're considering tonight. Because if anything can serve as at least a partial antidote to that dignitary injury, it's knowing that our community stands up in favor of equality and against discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Kevin Lake, please.
Thank you. Kevin Lake, Washington Avenue, 35 Washington Avenue. We, this is question one. We as progressives often develop habits of thought that incline us to take shortcuts and assume, for instance, very often, that within hierarchies, there's and assume, for instance, very often, that within hierarchies, there's a structure that's almost inherently exploitative, and therefore, that there are people who are being exploited and people who are doing the exploiting. And it's important to recognize what the governance structure of community hospitals actually is. Community hospitals are governed by volunteer boards made up of citizens. For the last nine years, I've been a volunteer in this capacity in Cooley Dickinson Healthcare. We trustees legally have a duty of care, with a capital D, capital C. We also have a duty of loyalty, we literally have to care and pay attention and improve. We have a duty of loyalty to the social mission of the organization. We hire managers that we believe will fulfill our mission and live up to our values. We spend several hours a week, I've been on several boards, I've never spent as much time as I have on the Cooley, but I've been on nine committees. We walk the floors, we talk to staff. We're very concerned with creating an institution that, where people will be proud to work and glad to work, and be able to deliver excellent care and feel, like their mission personally matches that of the organization. Bad morale, nurse burnout, unsafe patient loads are all evidence of dysfunction and evidence of poor management. In recent years, well, we had a different administration when I first joined, in recent years, we have put in place a management team that are committed to, and determined to build this as a place where people are, in a work environment, where people are glad to work and deliver excellent care. And we work with them every day, typically the trustees, to make sure that that's happened. And, we are also aware that we've chosen people who even if we weren't watching so closely would do that, because wouldn't you? If you were in that moment, if you had responsibility for the healthcare system? The M&amp;A website describes this problem as greedy, quote, "greedy CEOs maximizing their profits at the expense of bedside nurses." This is just insulting to people who have dedicated their lives to trying to get it right. And it's insulting to those of us who are citizens, trying to volunteer to make sure that we get it right. I'm a former union guy, I've been a member of two unions, I believe unions are central and important in our society. But make your case, don't make stuff up. This is, a lot of what people have been saying is in fact been disproved by an independent watchdog organization, the National Health Policy Commission. A lot of what has been worried about is in fact, I'm on the Budget Committee, I'm on a number of committees, there are real problems.
Mr. Lake?
We are, it's important to learn enough to think it through. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the people I have signed up. Is there anyone else who has not signed up but would like to provide public comment? So we'll go you, sir, and then, then we'll go behind you, then we'll go to Sharon.
Good evening, my name is Dave Reutman, I live at 575 Bridge Road. I strongly support the comments of the folks who spoke in, in favor of Yes on One and Three. But, I really want to express, first, thanks for your action on the GAZ infrastructure resolution. And the perspective I'm bringing in my comments right now is that, I, I, my career was as a psychologist, and I'm very aware of our human tendency to allow our focus to, to follow the moving target, so to speak. My gratitude to you for your action, not only on, on the infrastructure resolution, but on other resolutions that you've supported to help us deal with climate change. Comes to my perspective that we will be spending, in fact, we're already spending so much. It's going to be, if you read the IPCC report, you know how carefully that was put together, how well researched. We're talking about 50-plus trillion dollars. Where is the money going to come from to deal with all the rest of our challenges unless we deal with climate change first and foremost? So, I know I'm preaching to the choir on this, but I would just want to offer that perspective in terms of the dollars, and in terms of the lives. We're already seeing so many lives so tragically disrupted, and it's going to get worse and worse and worse very rapidly. So that's another perspective that I'm bringing. And my final point is that people who are very close to me, who are paying attention to this issue, are feeling real despair, paralyzing despair. And, I'm so grateful to you for taking the action that you have, and I know that you will continue to take these actions, because by doing so, you are really providing some hope for people who really need to be taking action and can be taking action, but are paralyzed because of this despair. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for those comments. So the gentleman who's right behind you, who I believe raised his hand, yes, sir? What's yours?
Good evening, my name is Manny Pintaro, I'm at 21 Hampton Court, Hampton Avenue, 523. Everyone knows me here. Thank you. I was not planning to talk, to say anything today, I just feel I'm here to support the resolution. But, the fact is of the matter is that I, I leave with everything I've been said, and just one more thing. Mark Carrick, who is the president of Bay State Health, all he does is abuse the time. And I was in many, many of the rallies and demonstrations with the nurses at Bay State. Frankly, I even went, I even went all the way to the birch shirts, and one thing is true, a lot of the nurses are being abused on the time. One case that came to my mind was, one of the nurses told me that one time she was there for 16 hours with no relief on sight. 16 hours, think about this. And now, everybody's trying to get question, for everyone to say, vote No on Question One. How would you feel? I mean, just think about this. You have some kind of bad ass thing, you know, and you're in the IC unit, and you have a nurse who hasn't had a break for 16 hours for her to take care of you. I would not feel very safe about it. That would definitely have to vote Yes on Question One. We have to vote Yes and say No to Carrick. No to all these people who are in the Big Pharma, and all these bureaucrats that all they want is to abuse the nurses. And want to tell the people, we are going to make the decisions for you. So I'm glad that Question One is being, uh, sought about it. And thank you for the resolution for Question Three. Vote Yes on Question One, vote Yes on Question Three. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think, Ms. Moulton, are you next?
I'm Sharon Moulton, I'm from 48 Evergreen Road in Leeds, in District Ward 7B. And I just want to personally say thank you, along with what David said, that it's really important to me that the city that I live in is standing up in recognition of this climate emergency that we're in, and the thing, and that we need to take bold stances in action right now, because I'm one of the people who can get extremely depressed. So, I thank you very much for that. And when I heard about the resolution in support of Yes on Three, I was very grateful, because I knew there'd be people here speaking, and there are people listening on TV, and it's really important to hear the support for that, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for those comments. Eric?
Quick one?
Sure.
Yeah, news flash, this is kind of weak, it came up last week, everybody's recycling, there are the pedal people here, evidently in the valley recycling every day, getting paid minimum wage to do the usual dump truck, trash run, demolition, or, they go all 596, down the hall on the town line, town line. And, my message is kind of weak, my, I lost my pencil sharpener, which was gold Elbeto, so I'm whittling with my Smith &amp; Wesson, and it's tending to, to fly, splintering. So, maybe Arizona could be recycled by Nike, because they would probably just put their stamp on it, just do it, I mean, everybody's familiar. So I did receive information, or a note from Elizabeth Warren's staff, general about the environment, a little pasty, we're all familiar, somehow we'll just start recycling Arizona. I believe, or Riper, totally in Rhode Island, or Ralph Nader. All right, thanks, Daniel.
Okay.
Good day.
Thank you. Let's see, so who else we have? Yes, sir, you in the back? Come, come right up?
Hello. My name is Anthony Mupington, Botanist, hooking up being the stew, Botanist, I'm point in chief of the Sixty Connotation of Southern Alberta, Canada. And the indigenous people in western Massachusetts were part of the fight in Sandysfield Oros State Forest to defend sacred stones against the, the Tennessee subsidiary of Kinder Morgan to defend the sacred stone that existed there in that old growth forest. And we were there to pray over the stones, and we were there to make a stand and put our bodies on the line to defend that old growth forest. We were not successful against the pipeline company that put the pipeline under the watershed that existed there. In fact, they drained over 100,000 gallons of that water to flush the pipe that they built. So, the pipeline company used Massachusetts State court system to go around Article 97 of the Massachusetts State Constitution that protected old growth forests, watersheds for the benefit of Massachusetts State residents. And the arm of that pipeline is scheduled to be built through West Springfield to service Holyoke, to service this area. And so, we just want to affirm that there are other ways to address this climate catastrophe, this climate crisis that we're all facing. And so, I just wanted to step forward and make a, be the voice of some of the indigenous people in western Massachusetts in the Pioneer Valley, in the, in this area, to praise and thank you guys for bringing this to, to the attention and take a stand, which is, people notice what Northampton does, and a positive move towards addressing this on a city level and making a statement is very powerful. So I thank you for that, and thank you.
Thank you for those comments, thank you. Anyone else like to give public comment at this time? Hearing none, we will convene. I'll ask all the councilors. Karen?
President?
Here. Here. Here.
Councilor O'Donnell.
Here.
And Councilor Shara.
Here.
All right, we are convened and ready to go. The first is a public hearing, this is announcement of a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2019 tax levy. The Northam City Council will hold a hearing on Thursday, November 1st, 2018, at 7:05 here in the city council chambers, 212 Main Street, Northampton, Mass, to discuss the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property within the city of Northampton for fiscal year FY19. In accordance with Chapter 40, Section 56 of the Massachusetts laws, information about this issue will be available for public inspection in the city clerk's office on or before October 30th, 2018, after, after 12:00 PM. Very exact time. Let's see, a quick update from me, you've heard this before, this is announcement regarding executive session minutes. The meeting law requires public bodies to regularly review minutes of executive sessions, determine if they may be disclosed. It's been determined that because of pending litigation, the purpose of the November 16th, 2017, executive session has not yet been served, and so continued nondisclosure is warranted. Are there other announcements from committee chairs, or other councilors? Councilor Shara?
Yes, on the agenda, there is announcement of public forums that are being held by the Committee on Community Resources in conjunction with the Committee on Legislative Matters. And these forums are to get public opinion on a proposal that's before the council to seek state legislation to increase the tenant membership of the Northampton Housing Authority. It, the, the proposal said, requests that the state legislature consider having tenant members be on the housing authority, and that they would be voted by the, those also that live in the buildings that are owned and operated by the housing authority. So, those forums, the first one is Wednesday, October 24th, it's next Wednesday, is a JFK Middle School in the community room, and that's from 7:00 to 8:30. And then, there will be one on Tuesday, November 13th, right here in the council chambers, from 7:00 to 8:30. The sponsor, who's Councilor O'Donnell, will present the, the proposal, and then will open it up for public comment. And if anyone would like to submit written comments, if they can't come, they can email them to Laura, who is our administrative assistant, and her email is L K R U T Z L E R at northhamptonma.gov.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the chair and then the committee for, to work in organizing those important forums, thank you. Councilor, Congress?
Is that the one-minute announcement?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So, in, on October 30th, that's a week from next Tuesday, here in council chambers, there will be a meeting, a, a, um, meeting to follow up from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation's 25% hearing that was held a few weeks ago regarding the King Street reconstruction. And specifically, this meeting will address issues around the proposed improvements to the intersection at Finn Street and State Street. So for those who were unable to come on September, I forget what the date was there, a few weeks ago when Mastod had its hearing, we will have more information regarding that proposal and where it stands, and allow for people to ask questions and be, and have questions answered by the DPW, who will be there, and also the project engineer for the Mastod project.
Could you repeat that time?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. It is October 30th, Tuesday, at 5:30 here in council chambers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other announcements? Councilor Bigwell?
Yes, this coming weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, the 19th to 21st, is the Northampton Jazz Festival, which is returning to Northampton after, after several years hiatus. It's great to have this celebration of local jazz musicians and nationally significant musicians coming to town. There's appearances in venues all over town Friday night and Saturday afternoon, there's a big concert at the Academy Saturday night, and there's a jazz brunch on Sunday that's a fundraiser, actually, to benefit Jazz in the Schools, a new program to promote jazz education, jazz music in our Northampton public schools. So, I would encourage folks to attend as much of that as possible.
Great, thank you. Others, Councilor Klein?
Tuesday, October 30th, there will be a meeting that is sponsored by the Planning Department here in Northampton, Planning the Future of Florence Center, a community meeting. It's for people to come and talk about what they envision for the Center of Florence. Tuesday, October 30th, 6:30 to 8:30 PM, at the Florence Civic Center.
Thank you very much. Any other one-minute announcements? Councilor Barch?
Yes, October 31st is the Halloween Parade in the Center of Florence, and also judging of costumes, is that I can repeat that? Across from Roger's Bicycle Shop in the park, so hopefully we'll see everybody dressed up.
Are you ready to reveal your Halloween costume, Councilor Barch? Are you ready to tell us tonight what it is?
Ready to.
Oh, nice.
You asked.
Can anyone beat that? Councilor Klein?
I can't beat that. That's not why I'm raising my hand.
See what you got.
Something else from the Department of Planning and Sustainability, the Northampton Climate Resiliency and Regeneration Plan, Climate Action Workshop, will be on Tuesday, October 23rd, from 5:30 to 7:30 at First Churches in Lyman Hall. The city is currently studying the sources of our community's greenhouse gas emissions. And it's an opportunity for the public to talk about how we see reduction in greenhouse gas, greenhouse gas emissions. And let's see what else I can tell you about it, though, just so you know what you're coming to. Yeah, it's also a fun event and there are going to be prizes. And I'm not quite sure what that means, but, and Tuesday, October 23rd, 5:30 to 7:30 in Lyman Hall at First Churches.
There'll be costumes? Okay.
Betty Boop might make an appearance.
Oh, boy.
Dress up as a pipeline, that'd be really cute. Anything else? Sounds like there are no other one-minute announcements, so thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, do you have any communications?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So let's see, we have the second reading of 18-170, Resolution Opposing Expansion of Gas Infrastructure and Calling for Increased Development and Implementation of Renewable and Clean Energy Sources. I assume we want to waive reading on this since you read it last time. Is that correct? Hearing no objection. Is there motion to approve it on second reading?
Motion approved.
Made by Counselor LeBarge, seconded by Counselor Klein. Discussion on second reading. Counselor Dwight?
Counselor Bidwell is actually, as you recall, offered a few amendments and some modifications. And we were, we were exchanging emails. There was, he has a lot of information at his hands and unfortunately he released some information that really didn't apply. So this is by way of introduction to, to Counselor Bidwell giving an opportunity to, to expand on what, what we have actually, some proposed modifications in here. But I defer to Counselor Bidwell to, to speak to that point.
Wow.
About those as an introduction.
I think what Counselor Dwight is trying to say is I sent the wrong attachment in an email to him.
I was trying to give you some cover.
As Counselor Klein realized too, I sent an attachment that was amendments to a resolution on gas pipelines from a year ago. Nonetheless, the, the two very simple things that we talked about in principle here, and I said I would write up and send on, had to do with the third whereas and the sixth whereas. And there have been adequate modifications made to the sixth whereas. The point of this was, we, we talked about, it was a little much to say that all of this attention to energy retrofits and solar energy regeneration and air source heat pumps was a direct consequence of the moratorium. Language has been changed to essentially say that those things were underway anyway. The moratorium probably gave it a boost. So I'm quite comfortable with the amended language there.
Counselor, would you like to read your amendments as you go?
Well, actually, the, what I had suggested is now reflected in a slightly revised language from two weeks ago. So.
So we sort of adopted?
So it, it, I don't know how you had intended it, Counselor Dwight.
Well, there's, there is an amended, proposed amended version that, that is submitted that you will find should be in your packet.
So we passed something two weeks ago.
Right.
I recall. Which of them reflects that? I, because we also amended it two weeks ago. So I sort of assumed that the amendments were amendments from two weeks ago.
Those amendments are in here.
Okay.
The ones that we passed. But we did amend one whereas in response to Counselor Bidwell's concern. And we agreed with him. So I'll just read it really quickly. It says, whereas in response to Columbia Gas's longstanding moratorium on new gas service installations, Northampton and surrounding communities have aggressively pursued green energy modalities, including energy retrofits, solar energy generation, air sourced heat pumps and methane capture, the use of which has reduced our dependency on natural gas while conforming to the goal of using only 100% renewable alternatives to provide our energy. So what we're saying essentially is exactly what Counselor Bidwell brought to our attention that, and that he just mentioned now, is that it's, it wasn't just in response to Columbia Gas's moratorium. We were already pursuing these things aggressively. But as Counselor Bidwell said, we gave it a boost. It gave it a boost to have the moratorium put into place.
Okay. So do we need amendment tonight? Or did we do this already? I'm confused.
That is a proposed amendment.
You just read an amendment that you would like to switch out one for the other.
Thank you.
Do I hear a second on that amendment?
Yes, you do.
Can we do one by one or do you want to continue?
Sure, let's just do that, just do that one.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment read by the Council of Ward Seven, proposed by Council of Ward Two? All is in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So that is approved. Do you have further?
Yes, this, this one is, is not reflected in, in the revised draft. It was to have been, but this was the, the wrong document that I sent along. The, the third whereas, and I'll read it as it stands now and as I would suggest a very minor change. In its June 4th, 2015 Resolution Calling for Transparency and Public Representation Regarding Natural Gas Infrastructure, the Northampton City Council cited data that suggests that repairing existing pipeline will eliminate the need for the installation of any new pipeline infrastructure and calls on gas companies not to build new pipeline, et cetera. The slight change that I had referred to when we met two weeks ago and that I would suggest here comes from the fact that I went back and looked at that resolution and it, there really, the, the resolution was aspirational and hoping that that might happen. But there was, at the time was no data. In fact, we're looking for data from Columbia Gas that would support this assertion. So if we're going to base one resolution on another resolution, I'm just suggesting we be accurate about our reference to the resolution. And I think it would be more accurate to say, the Northampton City Council asserted that repairing existing pipeline might eliminate the need for the installation of any new pipeline infrastructure. I would suggest, I would offer that as an amendment, since we didn't, we don't really have the data to support that.
Okay.
I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
Counselor Klein, you?
So that resolution, in 2015, we actually did cite data. We cited two pieces of data. One was Senator Markey's report and the other one, I'm blanking out on what it was. I would have to pull up the resolution. Probably, I would bet that Counselor Bidwell has it. Do you have it right in front of you? But anyway, those two reports, we did cite those two reports and we footnoted the reports. And they did both say that it's likely that with repairs to the pipeline, we would have adequate gas without building additional infrastructure. So that was in that resolution. That's a piece that I wrote in that resolution that I researched and included footnotes on.
So I direct any question to Counselor Bidwell?
No, this is in 2015. It was Markey's in a Harvard report or something. I'll, I can pull it up if we have a question about it.
I, I would, I would just add that I, I don't have terribly strong feelings about this. I didn't, I didn't see any footnote references. And my impression was that at the time, we hoped that plugging of gas pipelines might provide sufficient capacity to make up for other needs. But I was not aware and I didn't see the specific reference in the, in the resolution to that. So I was just suggesting that we frame it as affirmational as opposed to citing so categorically that it was the case. But if my colleagues would rather keep it in its original language, as I say, this is, since I totally agree with where the resolution winds up as, I'm not going to quibble further about the, a few sentences in the third whereas. So if, if the original sponsors are uncomfortable with the suggested change, I would be glad to withdraw my amendment.
Counselor Klein, do you want to?
Yeah, so we have whereas a 2000, this is from 2015. This was the amendment, and maybe you weren't looking at the amended version of that resolution in 2015, because this was an amendment that was approved and added into the resolution. Whereas a 2013 research report released by the Office of Senator Edward Markey documents that between 2000 and 2011, by not replacing leaking natural gas pipelines, gas companies have passed on to Massachusetts ratepayers between this much and this much, unaccounted gas that never reached their homes, businesses and municipalities, and that this leaked gas has contributed irreparably to the degradation of the public's health. Whereas according to the US Environmental Protection Agency, in 2011, leaks and other processes of the natural gas distribution system were the largest source of methane issues, blah, 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 sorry. Whereas this accounted for gas have captured through repair and upgrade of the current pipeline infrastructure could likely meet a significant portion, if not all, of our energy needs and allow for new hookups. So that's a whereas that came directly out of those two particular reports. And Edward, Senator Edward Markey's and the US Environmental Protection Agency's 2011 report. So that, that's where that came from.
Okay, so relative to the amendment on the floor, we can either have it withdrawn. We can continue to debate it. We can vote on it. But I leave it up to the maker of the motion.
I am, I am glad to withdraw my, my motion to amend.
Okay. So that motion is withdrawn. We're back to the regular order. Any further discussion or amendments to the resolution? No? Oh, excuse me.
Couple of Scrivener's things that were caught last time are now in here. The Northampton Energy and Sustainability Commission, as opposed to sustainability and energy, as you'll see. And we fixed at the very end the name of the, the group that the Northampton activists that we were working with are from, succeeding without additional pipeline swap is now in the resolution. I think that's it. Was there anything else?
That was, those were the points as I understood them when they were iterated, so.
So is that a motion to, that needs to be changed now?
For the Scrivener's?
Succeed wasn't because we weren't sure about the name.
I'll move the Scrivener's errors as a, as a matter of course.
That's fine. Or we can do it by acclamation. If there's any, is anyone opposed to making those changes? Hearing none, we've agreed to change them, so. Good. Any other discussion or amendments? No? Okay, so we're ready to have a roll call on second reading.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Okay, that is approved unanimously in second reading. We will proceed now to another resolution, 18-186. It's a resolution affirming Northampton and Massachusetts nondiscrimination laws prohibiting discrimination in places of public accommodation on the basis of gender identity and gender expression. I will, I will read it to start with. So this is the City Council, October 18th, 2018, upon the recommendation of Counselor Gina Louise Shara and Counselor Elisa F. Klein. I read the title and it starts, whereas the city of Northampton and the Northampton City Council have long supported transgender equality, passing a unanimous resolution on August 18th, 2011, in support of the Massachusetts House bill adding gender identity as a protected category to anti-discrimination laws in employment, housing, education, public accommodations and credit. And also unanimously passing a resolution to affirm the city's nondiscrimination policy and in support of the equality of access in public places on May 19th, 2016. And whereas on August 10th, 2017, the Northampton School Committee unanimously voted to formalize into policy its commitment to ensure for students and employees nondiscrimination on the basis of transgender, transgender or gender nonconforming status, including but not limited to, quote, "access to restrooms, locker rooms and changing facilities that correspond to their gender identity," end quote. And whereas the Massachusetts House of Representatives and Senate approved the addition of gender identity to the Massachusetts Public Accommodations Law, MGL Chapter 273, uh, 272, Sections 92A, 98 and 98A, signed on July 8th, 2016, signed into led, into legislation by Governor Charles Baker on the same day. And whereas the updated Massachusetts Public Accommodations Law has been in full effect since October 1st, 2016, and functioning well to protect against discrimination. And whereas the upcoming Massachusetts statewide election on November 6th, 2018, includes a ballot question, question three, seeking to repeal the provision in the Massachusetts Public Accommodations Law prohibiting discrimination on the basis of gender identity in places of public accommodation. And whereas repeal of this law would roll back civil rights and protections against discrimination of transgender and gender nonconforming members of the Commonwealth and be in direct opposition to the values and policy of the city of Northampton, that no person shall unjustly discriminate against any person belonging to a protected category, including age, ancestry or national origin, color, creed, family or marital status, gender identity, genetic information, mental or physical ability, race, religion, sex, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status or veteran status, relative to any essential public matter involving goods, services or access that are generally available to all people, including education, employment, healthcare, housing, municipal services and public accommodations. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of Northampton does hereby reaffirm our commitment to equal protection under the law for all people and encourages voters to vote yes on question three on November 6th, 2018, affirming approval of the Massachusetts Public Accommodations Law. Be it further resolved, the Northampton City Council opposes any effort to infringe on the rights of transgender and gender nonconforming members of our community and the Commonwealth, and strongly opposes repealing the provision in the Massachusetts Public Accommodations Law prohibiting discrimination on the basis of gender identity in places of public accommodation. Be it further resolved, that the administrative assistant of the City Council shall cause a copy of this resolution to be sent to the Yes on Three, Freedom for All Massachusetts campaign, to the No on Three campaign and to Governor Charles Baker. So I would accept the motion to approve this resolution. Made by Counselor Dwight and seconded by Counselor LeBarge. Could I ask the Council from Ward Four to start?
First, I want to thank my constituent Claire Lobdell, who approached me and asked if the council was going to address this one phrase. I appreciate her advocacy and that of many in our city, including people that live in the night. I also appreciate my co-sponsor, Counselor Klein, for her work on this. And I'm confident that any of our colleagues would have been very happy to sign on. And I appreciate the support that I've seen from other counselors on this issue. To the substance, I really don't have much to say, except that this is disgraceful that this is on the ballot and that we really even need to address it at all. The repeal of a basic fundamental right in discrimination is simple as that. Rolling back these protections from discrimination in a public place is wrong. It's cruel and it's backwards. And it would be shameful, in addition to leading on this issue, it would be shameful to be the first state to roll back these provisions and, and take away something so basic. So I ask everyone to vote yes on question three on November 6th. A yes vote is saying that yes, of course, we want to keep these basic fundamental protections that are already in place, that people can use public accommodations according to their gender identity. Everyone's entitled to use public space. That's what public means. The opponents of the standing law, in addition to feeling emboldened by the current culture in the White House, are betting that enough people will be confused by this ballot initiative or that they just dislike ballot initiatives and as a concept intend to vote no on them. I think it's disingenuous and it's sneaky. And there's really nothing that makes me more angry than nasty attempts to confuse voters, except blatant bigotry. So this one's a twofer for me. And so I just appreciate that everyone's support tonight on this resolution. And I ask that you all vote yes on November 6th.
Thank you. Counselor LeBarge?
I'm very upset that question three is even on the ballot. It is very upsetting that another resolution has been put in place by the council for reforming Northampton and mass discrimination laws for human discrimination in places of public accommodation on the basis of gender identity and gender expression. I really feel that people are confused with this ballot question. As a city council, I've had several people ask me, what is this question three? And when I tell them what it is, it looks like, why is it there? I am, as a city council, asking all voters in more than six and in the city to please vote yes on number three. Freedom for all Massachusetts to keep the basic protection people already have. Diversity is beautiful and is even more strong.
Thank you very much. Other comments from members of the council? Counselor Carney?
Thank you. Thank you, counselors Klein and Shara, for introducing this resolution. This is really important. In my day job, I work for the Massachusetts AFL-CIO. And I wanted to note that on September 25th, the Mass AFL-CIO officially joined 15 other major local, the AFL-CIO is the umbrella organization, but we joined 15 large other unions representing hundreds of thousands of Massachusetts workers and signing on and endorsing the Yes on Three campaign. And I'll just briefly. And, um, I'll just briefly, uh, read from the President, Steve Tolman, who says, "We are proud to stand shoulder to shoulder with our transgender friends, neighbors, and fellow union members in voting yes on three on Election Day. As a labor union, nothing is more important to us than the civil rights of our members and everyone across the nation. We know this law ensures that all people, including those who are transgender, can go about their living, their everyday lives free from discrimination and harassment. We strongly encourage voters to vote yes on three." So I just wanted to point that out and encourage people to vote yes on three. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Klein.
Because I'll just share very briefly kind of as follow-up to Counselor Carney's comments, um, that we have labor unions, um, supporting Yes on Three, but there's a really interesting kind of spread of diverse organizations that are, um, have come out in support of Yes on Three, and, um, some of them include the Massachusetts, um, Chiefs of Police Association, the Massachusetts Coalition Against Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence, every single championship New England sports team such as the Red Sox, the Patriots, the Celtics, the Bruins. I don't even know what those teams are personally, but I know, I know it's important to some people. Hundreds of faith leaders, bipartisan legislative leadership, many Massachusetts businesses that are Republican governor, and according to the Human Rights Campaign, nearly seventy percent of, um, the country's leading Fortune five hundred companies have nondiscrimination policies in place that explicitly cover, uh, gender identities. So the business community is also in support of this. So it's, it's just interesting that, uh, there is such broad, um, support, and I encourage everyone to vote yes on question three on November sixth.
Thank you, Counselor Dwight.
Um, now, of course, in the last couple of decades, actually, you, you know, for over, well, a couple of generations, actually, we've been progressing slowly, um, painfully towards advancing and expanding rights to everybody, to, to literally try to memorialize equity and fairness. And now we are in a time that didn't just start with this administration, started a little before, or actually, there are groups emboldened to work and strive towards reversing rights that have been achieved. We're going to literally, as Counselor Shera said, to go backwards. But it's, it's, it's rather terrifying because I believe, and I don't know this for sure, but I believe in our history, as rights have been achieved, they've been established and they are part of the bedrock. We don't go backwards. We don't go backwards. We don't do that. We still have, we still have to go forward to, there are many other people who are still suffering, um, either through institutionalized bias or, um, implicit bias, and the fact that we are now talking about the prospect and the possibility of literally stripping away the rights of American citizens and removing them, and to take them away from the protections that, that they should, I mean, the fact that we have to get to the point where we actually have to say they are specifically identified as protected and entitled to all the rights that everyone else should enjoy. And now we're, there are people who are working very hard with a sense of purpose to try and strip individuals, fellow citizens, of their, of their protections and rights. And it's, it's really, it is, and, and, and what we have, it's kind of frustrating, but what we have for our, what we have is this, this opportunity to scream as loudly as we can, or as, whereas-y as we can, to say absolutely no. Absolutely no. And I, and I'm pretty confident in the prospects of this passing. Um, I'm pretty confident of its, its overwhelming support here in the community, and, but I, we need to yell at the people who do not support something like this as loudly as possible to say, we are not taking this for granted, we are not going to sit still while you try to deny people the rights that they're supposedly entitled to under citizenship.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? I, I have very little to add, except I think it's, it's an extremely important statement for the City Council to make, so I appreciate the sponsors bringing this forward, I hope, and expect that we'll have a unanimous vote on this, and we're very clear in what we have felt, um, and believed as a city for a long time, and I think, um, it's, it's very fundamental dignity and inequality and respect for all people. So that's the message that we're reaffirming tonight, and it's a very crucial time to, to send that message. So thank you. I'll ask for a roll call.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
And Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
The resolution is approved unanimously on first reading. Great, thank you. Um, the consent agenda, let me read it, contains the following items. If you want to remove one, let me know, and we'll vote on it separately. The minutes of October fourth, two thousand and eighteen. Appointments to various committees, which will be tantamount to referring them to city services, I believe, at this point. Is that correct? Okay. Those are to the Planning Board, Terry Colhane, um, to the Transportation and Parking Commission, Adam Novit, and to the Trust Fund Committee, Jake Disinger. So a motion to approve the consent agenda made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, any abstentions, so that is approved. Uh, we come to eighteen one eighty-seven, the warrant for the two thousand and eighteen state election. Let's see, it's, it's very long because it lists, I mean, basically what it's doing, it says, "Order that meetings of the inhabitants qualified to vote in the City of Northampton will be held on Tuesday, the sixth day of November, two thousand and eighteen, in, in various polling places." This is our order to have a state election. Um, it lists all the voting places for all, uh, fourteen precincts in the city. It lists the offices, um, that will be, um, on the ballot. Those are Senator in Congress, Governor Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General, Secretary of State, Treasurer, Auditor, Representative in Congress, Governor's Counselor, uh, State Senator, State Representative, District Attorney, Clerk of Courts, Register of Deeds, those two for, for Hampshire County. And then it lists, uh, four ballot measures. There are three state ballot measures, questions one, two, and three. And, um, you know, the, the first is about, um, staffing ratios that, that you heard about earlier. The first is about a commission to consider potential amendments to the U.S. Constitution relative to corporate rights and campaign contributions, and the third, um, you just heard about the third, about protections for people and matters of public accommodation. There are two non-binding resolutions. Um, the first is, "Shall the state represented from this district be instructed to vote for legislation to create a single pair healthcare system?" The second non-binding question is, "Shall the state represented from this district be instructed to introduce and vote in favor of legislation adopting a system for all state and local primaries and elections in which voters rank candidates in order of preference?" That's a ranked choice voting election reform. So I don't know if there's any, I doubt there's any appetite for me to read all these in full, but that is what the, the ballot will be. Again, it's November sixth, Tuesday, November sixth. Um, so I'd ask for a motion to approve this order.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any other comments or discussion? Counselor Dwight?
Uh, relative to polling places for individuals who have any questions, I refer them to the city clerk's office to try and find, you can read it in this order, provided you know which precinct you're in, and if you don't, contact, uh, Pam Powers in the city clerk's office to find out where your appropriate polling place is.
That's right, and you can also go to the, online to the state site, the Secretary of State's office, type in your address, and get your polling place that way as well. Um, okay, well, good. So this is on the floor. I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
To spend the rule.
Okay. Is there a second to spend the rules, to allow for second reading?
Second.
Any discussion on suspension of rules? Um, we have to do this because we have to post the warrant by October thirtieth. Um, so all those in favor spending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions, some rules.
Move second reading?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion on second reading? Roll call, please. Uh, I know that was a, a quick barrage of motions, so whenever, whenever you're ready.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Okay, so that's approved. And we recess for finance now, is that right? Yes, we do. No, thank you. Alora, would you call the roll of finance, please?
Sure. Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor.
The first of our business is the approval of our minutes from October fourth. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Any changes to the minutes, as you've seen them? Then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And our next item is, uh, the first quarter financial report from the Finance Director, Susan Wright, and Susan's here to, uh, there's, bring us up to date on how we're doing at the end of the first quarter.
Okay, this shouldn't take long. There's been three months of revenues, but everything's on track. Um, I sent you revenues for the general fund and enterprise fund and expenditures for both as well. Um, so there's, uh, really nothing, uh, to highlight in the revenues, other than that they are on track. Um, some are a little higher than, um, I'd anticipated at this point, and that's a good sign, some of the economic indicators. But the revenues in the general fund are right where they should be, and if you look at the revenues for the enterprise funds, you can see that they're right on track, too. All four enterprise funds have between twenty-four and twenty-one percent of their revenues collected for the first three quarters. So we are in good condition in terms of revenue, and in terms of expenditures, again, it's only been three months, um, but the expenditures in the general fund, um, I look at all of the salary accounts just to make sure that none are going, you know, astray. Um, and everybody is either at or below where they should be, and where they are below, it's because I know that there are some vacancies in those departments. Um, in terms of OM, looking at the percentage doesn't really help as much, because some departments have expenses at the beginning of the fiscal year where they're paying not a lot of stock at the beginning of the year, might be, um, memberships or, um, big contracts that they're doing. So for the payroll side, the percentage is actually very useful for the OM side of departments, and just kind of know what's going on in the departments, and everybody is on track, um, and the same with the enterprise funds. They are looking, um, just as we would expect, so, you know, probably in mid-year, I'll have a little bit more to tell you about the way things are going, but, um, I will say that building permits are up, um, and so that's a good thing, too, for growth and for revenues, so.
Anyone have any questions for Susan on this order? Again, it's kind of early in the fiscal year, council.
True, it's early in the fiscal year, but I just wondered about, uh, the parking revenues, parking lot, parking garage, parking pass, we're all below the twenty-five percent mark. Is there anything to be read into that at this point in the year?
No, what I need to do is, I need to move, once I, once you set the tax rate, I will be realigning our revenues, because you don't vote the revenues, you just vote the expenditures. I'll be realigning the revenue in unis to match what we need to, to our budget. And what I need to do in the parking is, if you look at the lines for parking, before we went to the credit cards, we had four major categories. It was parking revenue, lot revenue, garage revenue, and pass revenue. If you look down below, you're going to also see parking kiosk, credit card, and mobile app revenue. But you see that there's no budgeted revenue, but there's revenue that has come in. What I'm going to do is line the column that says revenue, uh, the, not the column that says actual revenue, the revised estimated revenue, and I'm going to look at last year's totals for those and make, and take the same amount of parking revenue divided among those six lines instead of four.
Yep, I see what you mean.
And that will correct all the percentages.
I see what you mean.
Any other questions for the Finance Director about what the number of, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, now we have some financial orders. The first is eighteen one seven-six. It's an order to reprogram Academy of Music capital project surplus to the Academy of Music stage and handicap access project, whereas the funds to make the stage door access at the Academy of Music handicap accessible, and the project was bid in the spring of two thousand and eighteen, and whereas the bids received exceeded the approved budget and the project was put on hold in order to review and rebid once additional funds were identified, and whereas other Academy of Music capital projects have been completed and have funds remaining that are now surplus, therefore be ordered that forty-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars of the remaining balance in the Academy of Music Foundation repairs capital project and two thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars of the remaining balance in the Academy of Music dressing room repair capital project be reprogrammed to add to the eighty-seven thousand forty-five dollars previously appropriated for the Academy of Music stage door handicap access project, bringing the total amount appropriated for the stage door handicap access project to one hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Do we have a motion of finance?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
And the mayor's here to answer any questions.
Yeah, I think the, um, the order is sort of self-explanatory. Um, the project originally began with us trying to fix some unsafe granite steps, and then we, um, we wanted to look into the issue of trying to make it, uh, actually a handicap accessible entrance, because right now backstage access at the Academy, that's the only way to get backstage, um, so it's, uh, so it's important for performers who need handicap accessibility. So as the order said, we worked with a designer and, uh, attempted to achieve that, uh, with the funds that we had, and, uh, and the bids came in a little high, so we're going to try to rebid it again, uh, but we want to take these excess funds from these other smaller capital projects at the Academy to move them into the add account, so hopefully we'll have enough to, um, to complete the project.
Counselor Dwight?
Is this, um, this new total approximate what you were, the feedback you were getting on the bids?
It, it does, although we're going to do a little bit of, um, you know, we're going to do a little bit of value engineering on it. Um, you know, it's a challenge because it's a historic building, so, you know, you just can't slap any old.
Yeah, a pressure-treated ramp on it, yeah.
Exactly, yes. Um, so it's, we're mindful of that, uh, but, but luckily, you know, the, the board of directors is, is mindful of the cost, and, you know, we have a president who's a, the president of the board is also a president at O'Connell Engineering, and so he's very committed to help us, work with us to come up with a, a project that'll stay under budget, so we're hoping this will be enough to accomplish the project, and try to make every effort to do that, so.
Other questions for the mayor on this one? And again, all of the funds involved had previously been committed to the Academy for other projects in their surplus.
Yes, some of you may have recently seen the completion of the foundation repair that we did, which was a result of the work we did at the back of Lasky Park and the loading dock, and so it uncovered some foundational issues. Yeah, so, um, and then those of you who've been backstage, we tried to do some upgrades to the dressing rooms and bathrooms and, um, you know, kind of bring it a little bit eccentric. There's some, there were some issues there, so we wanted to tackle those, too. It is a municipally-owned theater, which a lot of times, that's a surprise to people, but it is a municipally-owned theater, so we want to work with the, uh, with the board to make sure that we keep the facility repaired.
Are there any other questions? No, hearing none, and all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any close? Okay. Uh, the next is eighteen one seven-seven. It's an order to increase senior work-off program maximum abatements. Order that whereas the legislature authorized the establishment of a program that provides for property tax liability reduction in exchange for volunteer services for persons over the age of sixty, and whereas the mayor and the city council accepted the provisions of Mass General Law, uh, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five K, on June nineteenth of two thousand and fourteen, establishing a senior work-off abatement program to allow persons over the age of sixty to volunteer to provide services to the city. In exchange for such volunteer services, the city reduced by no more than a thousand dollars per year their real property tax obligations, and whereas the legislature amended Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five K, effective November seventh, two thousand and sixteen, raising the amount of the allowable reduction of real estate property tax bills. Now therefore be ordered that the city council hereby accepts the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five K, as amended, establishing a senior work-off abatement program to allow persons over the age of sixty to volunteer, provide services to the city at an hourly rate consistent with the current minimum wage of the Commonwealth, and in exchange for such volunteer services, the city shall reduce the real property tax obligations of such persons by an amount not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars per year. Do we have a motion of finance?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions from the mayor on this one?
This is a, um, this is actually a result of the Municipal Modernization Act bill, I proposed that the city accept this state law and we started a senior and veteran tax work-off program. The issue was, when they, it was originally a thousand dollars was the maximum abatement. We've been working under that program. The Municipal Modernization Act, which is cited here, raised it to fifteen hundred. The problem is the veteran component of the tax work-off program was in a separate piece of legislation that did not get raised, it didn't get successfully passed by the end of the, by the end of that term. And so we did not, we wanted to wait until both of them had been raised to fifteen hundred so that when we made the change, that both our programs for seniors and for veterans. So, so this is sort of a two-parter. So you'll see we're going to raise the senior up based on that law. And then most recently, the legislature finally updated what's called the Fowler Act, which is a sort of an omnibus veterans bill that had gotten hung up in the legislature, and finally raised the veteran work-off to fifteen hundred. So that's why we're bringing it forward now to raise both of them to fifteen hundred. It's a two-part.
Mayor, how many veterans do you have that are in your test?
So we have, you know, we have about, I think we had about forty to forty-five tax work-off participants this year. And generally, it's about five, five, five to six veterans that participate. And they work through the, usually the Veterans Office works on helping them find placement. The programs are a little different because under the traditional senior tax work-off program, there's income requirements, you know, we have certain income requirements that we set. And the veteran program is, there's no income requirement, and that's part of the state law. We are not allowed to set any income requirements. But, you know, I know Steve Hunter and his staff do a lot of outreach to veterans to try to make them know about this program. So we have had several that have participated over now the five-plus years we've been doing it. It's been slowly growing from the first year. And many of them are working in city departments or city libraries or city schools. And it's been a, I think it's been a great program for an opportunity for seniors and veterans to be able to give up some of their expertise and work off some of their property tax bill.
Any other questions for the Mayor on this one? All right, no, hearing none. Then to the seniors one, all in favor of a positive recommendation of Finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any close? All right, and the next one is eighteen one seven eight. And this is the Veterans Tax Work Off. Order that whereas the legislature authorized the establishment of a program that provides for property tax liability reduction in exchange for volunteer service for veterans, whereas the Mayor and the Council accepted provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five N, on June nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, establishing a Veterans Work Off Abatement Program to allow veterans to volunteer to provide services to the city. In exchange for such volunteer services, the city reduced by no more than one thousand dollars per year their real estate property tax obligations. And whereas the legislature amended Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-six, Section five N, effective November seventh, two thousand and eighteen, raising the amount of the allowable real estate property tax bill. Now therefore be ordered, the City Council hereby accepts the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-eight, Section five N, as amended, establishing a Veterans Work Off Program to allow veterans to volunteer, provide services to the city at an hourly rate consistent with the current minimum wage of the Commonwealth in exchange such volunteer services. The city shall reduce the real estate property tax obligation of such persons not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars a year. Do we have a motion and? Second?
Second.
And I think we already talked about this one. Are there any additional questions? Counselor Labarge.
How many hours a week do I work volunteering?
They're only allowed to work.
Hundred and twenty-five under this program.
Yeah.
It was a hundred under.
Yeah, so the way the law works is that you, the hours are, you have to use the current minimum wage in the state. And so, so you basically take the minimum wage and multiply it by the number of hours you need to get to, you know, the thousand dollars. In this case, it'll be fifteen hundred, so it'll be how many hours?
Hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five hours.
At twelve. For both the veterans and?
Yes.
At twelve.
At the new twelve dollar an hour minimum wage. Obviously, as the minimum wage goes up, then the number of hours will go down. So, and we're going to see that go up the next several years to fifty, eventually to fifteen, so. It'll be a nice, two nice round numbers at that point to be multiplied.
If they only choose to work for, work a certain percentage of the hours, do they get?
Yep.
Okay, so it's, you don't have to do, it's not all or nothing.
Some people don't get all the way to the max, but, and, yeah. Work a little or as much as they want.
Any other questions on this one? Then, hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation of Finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any close? Okay, the next is eighteen one eighty. An order authorizing pilot agreement with, with Mike Cole, I can hardly pronounce it, Syncarpus Solar LLC. Whereas a solar electric generating facility has been proposed for privately-owned property on Park Hill Road by Syncarpus Solar LLC, which property is shown as parcel map twelve, lot one on Assessor's map forty-nine. Whereas the developer requires an accurate projection of the prospective expenses with respect to real estate and personal property taxes that are taxable under law. And whereas, given the difficulty in determining the taxable value of solar electric generating facilities, is the city's interest to have an agreement whereby the city is assured of a fixed stream of income tack, or tax income from the project. And whereas it's in the best interest of the city and the developers to enter into an agreement fixing the payments that will be made with respect to all taxable real and personal property incorporated within the project for the term of the agreement. Order that the Mayor is authorized to negotiate and execute a pilot agreement pursuant to Mass. General Law, Section fifty-nine, Section fifty-eight HB, with Syncarpus Solar LLC for a four-point-two-megawatt direct current facility on a parcel of land totaling thirty-two acres located on Park Hill Road, Assessor's map thirty-nine, parcel of dash oh-oh-one, on such terms that, and conditions that the Mayor deems advisable. Do we have a motion of Finance?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, questions for the Mayor on this one?
This is sort of a carbon copy of the order that you discussed and you approved a couple of, over the last two council meetings. This is actually a project, you sort of had a peripheral vote on it because there was a right of first refusal on chapter land that Mr. Fiden came forward to you on in the Counselor's Ward. And so, so anyway, they, they reached out to us about discussing pilot. And so that's why I wanted to get this in process. All the same issues and challenges that we talked about before. And so we're going to try to work with them to, to come up with something so that both they and we have sort of a firm understanding over the, over the course of the project.
Counselor, go ahead.
So, I mean, this is part of the weirdness of this. So you have to, with each pending solar project on private land, you have to negotiate these pilots with, with the LLCs. So, I, I, you put you at somewhat of a disadvantage because whatever contract you lock in initially, the, I'm sure any future applicants will be referring to that.
It is, yes. And I'm mindful of that, and I, we haven't actually finalized the other, we haven't.
Right.
The other one that you gave me approval for, we're not, you know, they are still going through some zoning-related issues. So it's a, you know, it's an interesting, yeah, I know where you're going on this. So we, we obviously are, we're doing a lot of research on other agreements and looking at sort of like per kilowatt hour costs that are embedded in some of these pilot agreements. And so that's sort of the basis of our conversations. And obviously, you know, we'd like to have them sort of be consistent.
Right.
There have been changes over pilot agreements over time. You can kind of see them markedly, particularly now that, you know, the, the, they're transitioning to this new SMART program, which is the new version of like the whole SREC's program.
Right.
And so some of the, some of the tax benefits are lower than they were before in the early going. And so, so there's some of those things to factor in. There's construction costs, there's the cost of the panel. So we're trying to get as much information from them. They're obvious, you know, their position is obviously that, you know, we're, you know, the industry's changed and this is a different ballgame. And so we're, we're looking at other agreements and trying to suss it out, but it is very difficult to do. But again, the reason we're in this situation is because there's not a clear, clearly updated and modern law about how municipalities assess these projects. And until we have something like that, this is the, really the clearest course.
Okay, so.
So we spend our time in the ATB, you know, going to the ATB to fight about it.
Right.
So.
No, I, I certainly understand the impetus.
Yeah, and this particular developer, you know, helpfully sent me the three latest, copies of the three latest ATB cases, just in case I have.
Just in case. Not so thoughtful of them, and I said they.
Really not.
Who has the upper, you know, some of an upper hand in this, in this process, so.
So is there a call from the last one? One of the major components in your analysis as to what to do is what you estimate the property tax would be.
Exactly.
If it was conventionally taxed.
Exactly, yeah.
So, you know, that's one of the things you consider, so that there's some relation between what we think we would be due if this wasn't all clouded up by a seventies vintage state law.
Yeah.
You know, what we'd be getting if we could property tax them cleanly. And, and that goes into figuring what the pilot should be, and they know that as well, I assume.
They do, they do.
Yeah, so.
They totally do.
And if the, if, if all of a sudden that law gets changed, they get whacked with a property tax bill they couldn't fight.
So, yeah, so it's, there, there's definitely a balancing act there.
Other questions?
Well, just, I wanted to extend, my point on this, of course, is that, you know, not everyone gets to negotiate their taxes, and, either corporately or individually. And that the state, the state's inability to accommodate or address this in any fashion that would actually allow cities to be more fair, or at least have a reasonable expectation of what they can assess, as opposed to going into this blind and then negotiating from a point of weakness. And, and, I, I mean, I'm all for the solar industry, but they, they're, and I would understand if I owned a business, I would take full advantage of the opportunity to try to pay as little as possible. But at the same time, and this is not a question, it's a commentary, I just think the, the state really has kind of handcuffed us in, and at the same time has created a, and it's not, this isn't unique to this industry, obviously, but we, but in this instance, it's, it's kind of played out pretty clearly that there is, there is, there's a big mess that the state doesn't seem to be willing to, to face. And as usual, as per usual, the consequences are borne by the smaller communities that are trying to keep up.
Yeah. Ran out of time now. Like Airbnb and like.
Yeah, no, there are a lot of shiny objects, isn't there? Yeah, I understand marijuana is going to be legal sometime soon, too, so, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so your point's well taken and hopefully legislative solution. And, but for now, this is the course we have. So this is, again, just the same sort of boilerplate, giving me the authorization to negotiate.
Now we hopefully can encourage our new Senator and Representative that if they get around to fixing this and it is advantageous to cities and towns, that they allow us to reopen this once they fix the law. We can level a playing field if in fact we discover it isn't level.
That's right.
Um, any other discussion on this one? Hearing none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation of Finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any close? All right, the next is eighteen one eighty-one. An order to purchase one hundred and nineteen acres on Marble Brook in Leeds. Order that whereas the open space recreation plan two thousand and eleven to eighteen recommends preserve economically viable land and fill gaps between protected land in the mineral hills in Marble Brook. And whereas the city is negotiation, in negotiations to purchase one hundred and nineteen acres of valuable wildlife and plant habitat that includes over half a mile of Marble Brook and a bus existing open space permanently protected with conservation restrictions. Order that the Conservation Commission is authorized to purchase or otherwise acquire for conservation and passive recreation purposes as provided by Mass. General Law, Chapter forty, subsection HC. Any fee easement or conservation restriction as defined in Mass. General Law, one eighty-four, subsection thirty-one, or any other interests in the above land and any immediately adjoining land that the City Council hereby accepts such conservation restrictions, that the Conservation Commission is authorized to grant conservation restrictions on any land so acquired and that the Conservation Commission is authorized to contract for and expend any federal, state, or other aid available for this project, including any grant from the Division of Conservation Services of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, including the Landscape Partnership Grant Program, with such related restrictions and, and agreements as the city determines agreeable. Further, that one hundred and twenty thousand dollars approved for such acquisition and that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Mayor is authorized to borrow the one hundred and twenty thousand dollars under Mass. General Law, Section forty-four, subsection seven. And the Conservation Commission is authorized to contract for any federal, state, or other aid available for this project, including any grant from the Division of Conservation Services of the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. Further than any grants, donations, or sales shall be used to reimburse the open space funds used for the purpose. Do we have a motion of Finance?
Make a motion.
Second.
And is this the one Sarah, is this the one Sarah? Do you want to give us a quick presentation and we'll ask you questions?
Good evening, everybody. This is an exciting project. As the resolution, or the order noted includes half a mile of frontage along Marble Brook and a bus existing protected open space. Although this couldn't be developed into a single-family home or anything else, there, as is the case with a lot of forest and open parcels, this could be extensively logged without further ado from the city and would eliminate the blue shed on one of the highest, if not the highest, part, peak in Northampton. So harming this visible home top and harming habitat and resource area. It's funded in large part through an already received state grant that we're working in partnership with the Coastal Land Trust on. They will also hold a conservation restriction on their property to just to make doubly sure that it's permanently protected. The order includes borrowing authority for the required local match for this grant. As is typical with these types of things, it can never be utilized. We'll request CPA funds for the local match and seek donations as well. And although it, in favor of those things, landlocked, it does include an access easement from Kennedy Road and we also hope to continue to fill in gaps with future acquisitions.
So questions for Sarah on this one? Counselor.
I'm having a hard time about, where is this located? If you come down by the end of Sebastian Road, Sarah.
Yes.
Go straight across over the bridge.
Yeah.
Is it further down on the left-hand side of that road, on Kennedy Road?
If you're going north, it would be on your left towards the.
Right, okay.
This, Counselor Labarge, this property belongs to Garson Fields and his sister. And it's located behind their, from behind their house down to the Brook in West Hampton.
Okay, I thought so.
Yeah, that's, that's right.
I'm fine.
Uh, Counselor?
I'm wondering if there's any way to include a provision that will keep this parcel from becoming a place that hunting is suggested for it?
That would, I mean, that would be up to the, the Council to decide. That, that has been done in the past. And in, in a few instances, it seemed like that either hunting or no hunting really made, made sense at that time. And the Council later came back to revisit that. But that's within the Council's purview to decide. We generally don't like to do that, just.
Other questions for Sarah? Hearing none, then Counselor, you all set?
Yeah.
Okay, then all in favor of a positive recommendation of Finance, please say aye.
Aye.
The next is eighteen one eighty-two. And this is an order authorizing acquisition of an easement for Garfield Avenue. And this is a, kind of a modified thing we've seen before, but the Mayor can explain why we're doing it again. Whereas by order eighteen zero two four, the City Council voted to lay out and accept the public way that parcel of land shown on Garfield Avenue extension. It's three thousand eighty-two point four square feet on a plan entitled Commonwealth of Massachusetts Street Acceptance Plan of Garfield Avenue Extension, prepared for the City of Northampton, Hampshire County, dated March sixth, two thousand and seventeen. Whereas in order to complete the layout of the extension to Garfield Avenue, the City Council must authorize the acquisition of the land. Now therefore be ordered, the City Council hereby authorizes the acquisition by purchase gift, eminute domain, or otherwise, and that the parcel of land is shown as Garfield Avenue extension. It's three thousand eighty-two point four square feet, plus or minus, on a plan entitled Commonwealth of Massachusetts Street Acceptance Plan of Garfield Avenue Extension, prepared for the City of Northampton, Hampshire County, dated March sixth, two thousand and seventeen. No appropriation is needed for the acquisition. Do we have a motion of Finance?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
And the Mayor can explain why we're revisiting this.
It's really, I think it's really just to correct an order that had been previously passed. It's, there's some narrative in your agenda that explains it. You had acted to lay out and accept Garfield Avenue as a public way. And then there was an approval of a Garfield Avenue taking back in May. And again, we're talking about the little section of Garfield Avenue at the end of the street that still was, heretofore was under the control of Habitat and they were maintaining it. So we wanted to just make the full public way complete. And so I believe that the lang- to just make the full public way complete, um, and so, um, I believe that the language that was used back in that May order, um, did not have the proper wording, and so we're trying to bring it back to you to get the proper wording, um, because winter is coming, and we, and Habitat otherwise will be responsible for plowing this little clump at the end of Garfield Avenue.
Yeah, it, as I understand it, in the previous order, we authorized you to acquire it?
Yes.
But if it's a taking, we have to do it.
Exactly.
The, the legislative body has to do a taking, so all, really, the big change is, rather than the authorizing you to do it.
Yeah.
We're taking it, because that's our authority, not the mayor's.
Exactly. I'll file it at the Registry of Deeds for you, but I'll do all that.
Do the leg. We gotta, it's gotta be our action, not yours.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions for the mayor on this one? Hearing none, then, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Again, we are requesting two readings if possible, just so that we can, so that Habitat knows it doesn't have to hire a snow plowing company for, nothing's gonna snow in November, but.
Ever can tell?
There's snow at the end of October.
In that order of taking.
For signature by all members to be.
After the council vote, yeah, yeah. Um, the next is eighteen one eighty-five, uh, this is an order to reprogram radio hardware funds for radio hardware and radio consulting services. Order that funds appropriated by the City Council from the Capital Stabilization Fund in April two thousand and seventeen of two hundred thousand dollars, and in March of two thousand and eighteen of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the purchase of radio hardware for Public Safety Communications, uh, that the purpose be expanded to include both radio consulting services as well as the purchase of the hardware. Do we have a motion of finance?
Make it.
Second?
Second.
Any questions for the mayor on this one?
This is just, we're, we're trying to, the lang, the, the plain language of that, of those two capital orders was just to purchase equipment, and, um, we, given these are, this is part of our ongoing and larger public safety, radio upgrades and reconfiguration, um, we need some technical assistance on some of the work that we're trying to do, so we wanna be able to also, uh, be able, as part of this, sort of like you hire an engineer to help you, you know, build a bridge, and so we'd ask you for design and construction monies, we need some design help with this, with these acquisitions, so we wanted to expand the definition to include the consulting and purchase of the radio hardware.
And just to remind everybody from, from capital improvements, for years, capital improvements has wanted to get police, fire, DPW, all the radio people coordinated with one vendor, with matching equipment, with all the frequencies laid out properly, and the frequencies have to be changed because of everything getting dig- digitized, so the goal is to get one contractor to set it all up, matching equipment for everybody so they can talk to each other, and one set of towers and so forth, it's a very sensible, sensible thing.
This is sort of the tip of the iceberg, it's a bigger project, but this is sort of the first steps that we're working on now.
Yeah. Any other questions for the mayor on this one? Then hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
And the last one is eighteen one eight-eight, this is an order to appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars in CPA funds for, for housing for homeless youth. Order that whereas Dial Self submitted an application for Community Preservation Act funding for the Housing for Homeless Youth Project, and whereas, uh, currently, this population faces a gap in support of housing services in Northampton, and nearby, despite being a high-risk group, and the project has wide community support, uh, whereas the Community Preservation Act funds have contributed to the purchase of the parcel, and these additional expended funds are necessary to fill the critical funding gap for construction, and whereas Western Massachusetts Network to End Homelessness has declared, uh, unaccompanied, unaccompanied homeless youth a priority in its regional plan, and whereas the CPA funds will leverage up to four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of funds from other sources, and whereas on June eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, the Northampton Community Preservation Committee voted six to to recommend that the seventy-five thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act funds be used to support the project, now therefore it be ordered that seventy-five thousand dollars be appropriated from Community Present Preservation Act funding to Dial Self for the Housing for Homeless Youth Project, for the creation of six to eight affordable housing units, and that the grantee meets the conditions approved by the Community Preservation Committee, the mayor, and the city councils, specifically, uh, the seventy-five thousand dollars and ten cents is appropriated from the CPA Affordable Housing Reserve account. Do we have a motion in finance?
We have positive recommendations.
Second?
Second.
Uh, Sarah, you wanna hear the CPA?
So first note, that.
Change your hat.
The ten cent should not be there, so, so, the ten cents needs to be removed from the final order. Um, so this is the project that's under construction on Hatfield Street, I came before you, two years ago.
It's, it's actually on Locust Street across from Smith Oak, right?
Yes, so the very beginning of, of Hatfield Street. Um, so I came before you two years ago to locate initial funding for purchase of the parcel, CPA funds were some of the first dollars in at that point, so there were a lot of unknowns and details of the project, as those details started to get fleshed out, Dial Self realized that they had a, a funding gap for construction, they came before the CPA, uh, CPC to request expedited funding, the reason for the delay between June and now is we, we just didn't have those funds available in our accounts, um, so I'm asking for two readings tonight, if, if the council agrees that makes sense, um, so basically, this is just to get the project, get, keep going through the winter, not have to stop and remobilize again in the spring, and get the units online as soon as possible.
Counselor Dwight?
Uh, the, that's, Counselor Murphy noted, the foundation's already poured, right?
It is, yes.
That they, so, they, they, yeah, and I've talked to Rick Hart, and he was saying that they're kind of anxious to get moving and optimistic of the prospect, so.
Yes, so these funds will allow construction to start now and continue over the winter, otherwise, the foundation will need to be stabilized and the, and work will stop.
And additional expenses would be incurred, as you said, to try and protect the foundations space, and.
Counselor Klein, you have a question?
Um, I see it was a six to two vote in the CPC, and I'm wondering if you can tell us a little bit about the conversation there, and.
Sure, um, so the, the committee agreed to a person that this is a tremendously important project, and, and absolutely needs to go forward and be funded, there was a little bit of concern about a request for expedited funds that early in the fiscal year, actually not, not even the start of the fiscal year, uh, so the committee didn't know what was coming before them, um, they were, they had concerns about spending any amount of funds before knowing what else would come in for applications, and there was also some concern about, um, the way the project developed, that because they had been involved so early, and they didn't know a lot of details, there were, there was a large gap in between the initial application and, and this next one, and they, they were, they had hoped that there would be some more communication, but I think that will all be worked out during the construction process, they all agreed it's tremendously important and, and should move forward. So the two votes weren't against the project, it was just against the, uh, the, the way things had transpired, really.
Uh, Counselor?
So, why don't we specify where this is happening?
Uh, we certainly could, um.
I'm just.
I, I, we use the, the previous order as a template.
Okay.
And it hadn't been known at that point, but that certainly could be added.
Certainly is there.
It is.
Um, any other questions for Laura on this project?
Sarah.
And, uh, yeah, well, yeah, we'll lose the dime.
Yes.
Yep.
We'll call it a scribbler's error. Then all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, and I know of no new business, my voice made it through.
Move for your.
Second.
Second? Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll deal with some of these financial orders, eighteen one seventy, an order to reprogram Kennedy Music Capital Project Surplus, or Kennedy Music Stage Door and Get Access Capital Project, motion for first reading.
Second?
Taken by Counselor LeBarge, discussion on this. Uh, roll call, please.
Um, Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
And Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Um, now that I think about it, is there any, um, desire to take the two items that Ms. LaValle was here for up next, in case she might wanna leave afterward, please? So, the first one would be.
Which one?
E, eighteen one eighty-one, order to approve the purchase of one hundred and nineteen acres on Marble Brook in Leeds, so motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded. Any other discussion or questions? Discuss pretty thoroughly in finance, uh, so I'd ask for a roll call.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
So that is approved in the first reading, um, I'd ask, how we go to H, which is eighteen one eighty-eight, and order to appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars in CPA funds for Housing for Homeless Youth Project.
Move to approve.
Made and seconded. Uh, any questions or discussion? Uh, Counselor Dwight, and then Counselor Bidwell.
Sarah, is there a need for two votes on this, for?
Dial Self has indicated that the two votes that this one would greatly.
Be appreciated.
In, in starting construction.
That's what I figured, okay, thank you.
For which one?
For the, this item, item eighteen point one eighty-eight, the money for Dial Self, the seventy-five thousand dollars CPA funds.
Counselor Bidwell?
I thought the suggestion about identifying the parcel did, in fact, made sense, do we wanna, um, make a simple amendment to identify it? First, the part, do we have a, or maybe we don't have a assessor's map, a way of identifying it right here and now, or, just, it's, it's on Locust, Locust?
Locust Street.
Locust, Locust and Hatfield?
Not quite Hatfield, actually.
Locust, too.
One, one lot in from Hatfield.
I think it, I think the actual.
The, the number is on.
So, oh, so the main entrance would be?
Because of the driveway.
Okay, so it does face, portion would face it on Locust, but the main access.
Vicinity of, perhaps.
In the, in the vicinity of Locust and Hatfield Street, or something.
I think that would be appropriate, okay, so I'd second that amendment.
Okay.
Um, any discussion on the amendment? Uh, and so this is gonna go, what we just said, it would be the parcel located in the vicinity, that's where this goes, correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you, any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions, so that's approved, now to the order itself, any further discussion?
So moved.
Uh, so, yeah, we have it on the floor, so I'll ask for a roll call.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
And Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Motion to suspend.
To suspend rules?
Seconded by Counselor LeBarge, any discussion, suspension of rules, who allow for two readings? Uh, if not, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, so it's approved.
Second reading, please.
Second.
Second by Counselor Bidwell, any discussion on second reading? Uh, roll call.
Okay, Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
And Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Approved on second reading, so, um, let's go back up to B and C, is there a motion to take both eighteen one seventy-seven, which is an order to increase senior tax work-off program maximum abatement, and eighteen one seventy-eight, in order to increase veterans' tax work-off program maximum abatement, uh, together as a group for approval and first reading?
As a group, please.
Second.
Made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor LeBarge, any discussion on these two orders? They, it's great to be able to do this, um, so I'll ask for a roll call.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
And Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes, so it's approved on first reading, next, eighteen one eighty, in order to authorize payment in lieu of taxes agreement, uh, with Syncarfa Solar LLC, motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on the, um, roll call?
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Uh, it's approved, now we come to eighteen one eighty-two, in order authorizing acquisition of easements for Garfield Avenue extension, is there a motion to approve this?
Second.
Um, yep, this is just a technical thing that we have to do, and I thank the administrative citizens of the City Council who, who caught the issue, um, so it sounds like we're ready to have a.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
And Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge? Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Suspend the rule?
Second on suspending the rules?
Second.
Second by Counselor Dwight, any discussion on suspending the rules? Uh, all those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions, so.
Second reading, please.
Second.
Okay, made by Counselor Dwight, second by Counselor LeBarge, any discussion on second reading?
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.[1513.91]
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that is proven second reading.
If you, if you would like a map and lot reference for that. Do you have to get that? Housing thing, I have one.
Too late.
Be 23B-032.
Good for the record.
23B-032.
Eleven Hatfield Street. I found it, it's 11 Hatfield Street is the actual street.
Now we really know where.
We said in the vicinity of Hatfield Locust. Good enough.
It does cover it, yeah.
Very good, very good. But thank you for that. And now, we're at 18-185, in order to reprogram radio hardware funds for radio hardware and radio consulting. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
And second from.
Me, second.
Counselor Bidwell. Any discussion? Better luck next time.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
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 Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
And Counselor Klein?
Yes.
So that's approved, and there's, there are two things for all of us to sign after this, orders of taking, so don't run to the donut place that quickly, stay just a little bit longer, we need your signature. There are three ordinances which have not been referred. I meant, they all go to Legislative Matters, but they may go to other places too, so we'll just look at them individually. 18-179, an ordinance to amend Chapter 350-11.5 B2 site plan submittal requirements. So it looks like that's going to go to planning and Legislative Matters. Any desire for other things? Do I hear a motion to refer to those?
So moved, I would like to move those.
Seconded by.
Second.
Counselor Nash got that one.
Sorry, sorry.
Any discussion?
Focus on looking at them.
All those in favor of the referral, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, so that is referred. Next, 18-183, ordinance relative to no parking in grass plots and tree roads. Also notice to get off the city's lawn. This ought to be referred to Legislative Matters. And.
They come from, oh, this came from, this has come from?
That's right.
No.
No.
Going to TPC.
Definitely.
Requested referral to TPC.
TPC.
Oh, okay, very good. So those two, TPC and Legislative Matters, anywhere else? So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Seconded by.
Second.
Counselor Dwight, any discussion on the referral? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions, so that is referred.
Where does it go into the legislative?
Legislative Matters and transportation parking. Next, 18-184, an ordinance to amend Chapter 5 of the Code of Ordinances by adding Section 5-7, designating certain positions as municipal employees. To Legislative Matters?
Move for all Legislative Matters.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Shara. Any discussion on the referral? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, very good, so that's referred. Now we have stuff we can vote on. These are ordinances. 18-123, an ordinance to amend Chapter 312-110 of the Code Book. This is relative to Strong Avenue, and I'll give you the gist of it as best I can here. Let's see, okay. This received a positive recommendation from both transportation and parking and Legislative Matters. This would modify the off-street parking area, Strong Avenue Lot and the southerly side of Strong Avenue, entire lot for the portions of the lot facing the rear of, facing rear buildings. What it would do is change the time limit and class of the parking area from two hours, Class 1B, to three hours, Class 1F. So I hear a motion on this for discussion.
So moved.
And seconded by Counselor LeBarge, it sounds like, so, so, Counselor Klein.
A question, I guess, for the mayor, if nobody else.
Sure.
It came up in Legislative Matters, we just had a question about the, except for the portions of the lot facing the rear of buildings, or maybe Counselor Nash would know the answer, why and how is that going to be, how will they be designated as different than the rest of the lot?
Those are longer-term parking spots. It's actually like a longer-term, like 10-hour area on those spaces, so those are already designated for longer-term parking, and it actually is somewhat of a, there's, it sort of provides a little bit of employee-ish parking in that sort of part of downtown. So we're really just talking about where there's currently meters, the metered areas. You sort of go around that little loop in East Side Grill Parking Lot is what we're really talking about. And this is to kind of align it with what we did in the Armory Street Lot and the Masonic Street Lot, where we went, where we moved Main Street from one hour to two hour, we moved those lots from two hours to three hours, and, and we're putting in kiosks to replace meters like we've done elsewhere. So, so that's the difference between that lot, it's not the entire lot, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Does that square, Counselor Nash?
Yes, and I, I think we might want to do this in two readings tonight as well.
I would like to request two readings, yes. There was a, some delays, I think, in this making its way through the process, so.
And I'm sorry, does it raise the fee?
No, it does not.
Does not?
Does not, yeah.
Class change does.
Just a class change, no fee change.
Okay, yep. Any further discussion on this? So we have it on the floor, I'll ask for a roll call.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
And Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
There you go. Good, now 18-125, an ordinance to amend Chapter 312-104 of the Code Book. Can the Chair of Transportation and Parking or the mayor summarize this? It's basically a column, changing the limited-time parking rules. Well, actually, I guess what it does is just change from one hour to two hours, the parking rules basically for all of downtown Florence, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so, on, on streets, Your Honor, do you want to describe?
No, I just, it's sort of, again, a corollary to what we did with downtown Northampton, where we raised it from one hour to two hour in the heart of downtown Northampton. So in conversations with Florence Civic and Business Association, they were, they were amenable to increasing their signatures on limited downtown Florence two hours as well. That's really what it does, is it makes our, both of our downtowns match in terms of the core parking type.
So this is.
No fees or meters.
No, just time.
No.
It's Chestnut Street, it's Main Street Florence, it's Maple Street. Well, first, do we have a motion on this?
I'd move, put it on the floor.
Seconded by Counselor LeBarge. The Transportation and Parking Commission discuss a, may I know, time the time people say there are parking issues in the Chestnut Street, Main Street area? Did any of those things come up, or?
Oh, absolutely, and we're, we're going to be looking at that. This is referring to the marked spaces that exist right now in, in Florence, but, so that's, that's a discussion of adding or better defining the parking, and, yes, we had that discussion, and we will be doing that throughout the winter. Yes, we will.
Right, what, any other discussion on the ordinance? Can I have a roll call?
Sure.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
And Counselor Nash?
Yes.
So that's approved in the first reading. The next is 18-172, an ordinance relative to parking on Union Street. What this does is add a new limited-time parking space, it seems like, on Union Street, on the southeasterly side. This is a 15-minute space, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, from a point 135 feet southwesterly from Parson Street to a point 160 feet southwesterly from Parson Street, and we have a map as well. But is there a motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
Okay. Counselor Nash, do you want to?
Sure.
Purpose of this?
Yeah, so at Bridge Street, the, the pickup-drop-off struggles at Bridge Street School are pretty well-known, and that this is, you know, this is an attempt to address one of the, in a small way, part of that problem. One of the things that is occurring is that the parking lot at Bridge Street School will fill up during the day, and so parents showing up to drop off a lunch, pick up a child, there, there's not an assigned space for parents to just pull up and have 15 minutes to run into school and be able to take care of those things. By designating this, this space, parents will be able to do that throughout the day, and hopefully, parents will also be using this space during pickup-drop-off time to let their children off and that they can just walk into, walk onto school property from here. It's, it's a small step towards that bigger pickup-drop-off problem, but it will address that ongoing problem throughout the day.
Counselor Dwight?
Should be noted, this is amended in Legislative Matters to modify the dates that this was in service. Originally, it was posted as Monday through Saturday, but as we noted, as some wise person noted, there's no school on Saturday, so we, it was, we amended it to say Monday through Friday.
Yeah, longstanding third ward problem. So, good. Any other discussion? We can have a roll.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Approved in second reading. Next, 18-138, an ordinance relative to parking on Adair Place.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, whenever we're ready.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Second reading?
Just, just a point of information, it's actually item 18.152, not 153.
Thank you very much. Good, any new business today? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Any opposed adjournment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Counsel.